Good afternoon, school board, Dr. Condit and Mr. Stacks. The time is 5:00 PM on May 7, 2024, and I shall be the board workshop meeting of the Edward Independent School District's school board to order. I shall begin with roll call. Mr. Doki Eira.
President.
Mr. Frank Luis Minota.
President.
Mr. Louis Gomez.
President.
Mr. Michael Fontes.
President.
And Mr. Richard Santoyo.
Eric.
Mr. James, I mean, Dr. James Abnandis will not be able to join us today, and I, Mark of American Press, let the record show that a forum of the Edward Independent School District's school board is present, that this meeting has been really called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Community Act. And you will please stand before me for the presentation of the flag and moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the president, Justice Trump. Una lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y la República que representa, una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. On the next flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one nation, under God, one indivisible.
Madam President, we do not have communication from the citizens.
Okay, it's ready now, let's go.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Uh, good evening to the board, uh, through the leadership team, and then, of course, our other staff and, uh, friends that are here this evening. Uh, Ward, we have three items up for you for tonight for the work, uh, study session. You're going to hear a presentation from the leadership side of the, uh, uh, school district council led by Mr. Philip Chavez. He and his team are going to bring to you the items that are under consideration for this month's, uh, board meeting, which is on May 21st. You're also working here on the Lone Star Governor's monthly report that also is brought to you by, uh, Mr. Chavez. Immediately after that, you will also hear a presentation from the business operations side of the council led by Mr. Peter Maitena and his and her team. Uh, Ward, I do want to remind you, all items that are on this presentation are the same items that are on the visit under your agenda at work session. These items are going to be brought to you for consideration and support, uh, two weeks or a meeting. You will also find these items in the board update this Friday, as well as the topic components that we provide for you to get a question to make and consider coming through the meeting. And so that information will be brought up to you as well as next week. On Thursday, we have more performance planning, two sessions that are available, uh, Mr. Staele, uh, many of them reaching out to you to see which ones those times are available. We are now down towards the end of our budget season, June. We will be adopting, uh, uh, your, uh, support, the this year's budget for the 24, 25 school year. Our final report at that meeting is on June the 13th, that is Thursday, uh, June the 13th. If you'd like that, I may have lost some of that information on the calendar. Uh, but for this evening, I'll turn it over to Mr. Chavez for his people to present, uh, and then, of course, your questions during the presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, colleagues, Abnandis, and any people that are here on the, uh, on the camera. I'd like to start off first saying that this is a student that actually won a ESSER River Parade Art Contest, and that's what you see here on the backdrop to start off with. As you know, our school board has a vision and mission, and with that mission, we also have a, uh, uh, outcome, graduate all scholars, college career or military ready for their expected date of graduation. We have our vision 2028, with our mission, outcome, and our fourth priority, of course, our core values of professionalism, accountability, and communication. And also, we have the list of those outcomes that we have on the right-hand side, decrease literacy in math, increase number of students who graduate at CCR rate, uh, increase family choice and student engagement streamlining system process. Uh, I want to take this time to share with you, uh, we're having a repurpose, uh, meeting, uh, this Thursday at nine o'clock at the neighborhood place, uh, to offer the gathering of foot-for-community members, ask you what they need right now.
Nine o'clock?
I'm sorry, I said, I said nine.
I said.
Oh, I call it nine.
Six o'clock.
Whoa.
We don't get anybody.
Six and seven thirty PM at the neighborhood place. We also have a more high school barbecue meeting, who will be making sausage for us for our participants. Uh, so come, please, and provide us some feedback on your, uh, board members. Uh, you have this particular flyer with you, uh, front and back, uh, fingers snapped. Thank you. Okay, so our leadership team, good night to you, myself and Dr. Basuko, and these are intended learning outcomes that we'll talk about the LSC monthly report. You'll hear reports on the following vendors, uh, to provide us, uh, tier-one, uh, instruction and also instructional supports, in addition to some of the consultants and contracted individuals, uh, that we'll talk about in Global and Espechist Specialist of San Antonio. Uh, our Lone Star Governor's monthly monitoring for May 2024, uh, includes the Lone Star Governor's Goal One, Grade Three reading, uh, we're looking at K reading, uh, kindergarten reading, uh, Grade One reading, and Grade Two reading. Unfortunately, the 2023-24 Lone Star Governor's monthly calendar indicates that this month we would have reading, uh, K one, uh, K one and two results. Uh, however, because, uh, at this time, we do not have the results ready, uh, and if you remember, uh, Grade Three for math and reading are STAR results, uh, we won't have those ready until June. So due to that data not being available, we're going to present at the June meeting the reading goals along with the mathematics goals, so they'll be in conjunction to be there. Any questions on that? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services, Dr. Robert Ruffield.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Good evening, I have residence, Dr. Abnandis, the team board members and colleagues here in the room. The next items for your consideration are the supplemental materials. As you recall last month, you graduated a number of tier-one materials. Here are the supplemental materials. Uh, before I begin that, the first five items are kind of, kind of grouped together to the sense that, um, we have the items ready based off of one quote last week. Ms. Berna Martinez and her, Dr. Les Fong, some bondage through the ESSER funds. So for us to do that, for online, um, licenses for two-year quotes, so we quickly had to turn around and scramble and try to get the quotes. As a matter of fact, we got the final quote yesterday morning. Unfortunately, morning we were uploading them up, so what we did is we just doubled the amount. And so what you'll notice is in four out of the five quotes, we got a better price. With the exception of one, which is the first one here, is, uh, I already think of. And the reason being is because when we were dealing with the two-year quotes, we noticed that I already did not have Stafford included. So when I have Stafford, my two-year quote, so the amount is a little more than the double. However, it does include all the elementarys and the two middle schools. Now, what this item does is I can give teachers as a resource for STAR 2.0 to be ready to ask questions. So they go online, they have access to all reading and ask STAR 2.0 questions, and then they use that to assist in their construction. The next one is Imagine Math in, in, in Espanol. And I kind of put this one together with 4C because they do the same thing, except that one is in Spanish and one is in English. This is the Spanish version of an adaptive math program where children are either going in during their intervention time, they log in, and then based on the standards that they're lacking, they can get, get scores in Espanol. This is the one we use for Spanish, K five. And then here, ZERN, which is what we use for K eight. And ZERN is the one that we used last year, and we use this, and we have some new results on this. So those are what they're two-year licenses for mathematics. So I thought these two, we got adaptive math in Spanish, adaptive math in English. Okay? Next one is, and on the, uh, board, you know, this one is a math, NWA math growth results. That's what we use our beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. It's a nationally long, long reference assessment that we give for kids to measure growth. We give them the beginning of the year, we give another one at the middle of the year, and then one at the end of the year. We use this to project STAR 2.0, and we provide people board, uh, performance teams. This is where we get the data from. One, two, and more importantly, is where we get the data for TIA. This is how we're able to validate teachers, and whether or not we show them growth progress, and whether or not they earn the TIA for the seventh point. Okay, so this is our platform, and that's for two years. This is for reading, math, and science. Next is the Rival, and we share this information. This is what we use this year, we have it this year, and we had some great success because, you know, in reading, and we talked about that this year, is reading as an hour of reading and a writing test. And this is the online platform that we use for children to get in and practice their writing, concept skills, and taking content, and adaptive to writing. And this is the platform I use. And, uh, this is where we were able to show you some, uh, at the last, uh, board performance module, some samples directly from writing. Remember, Rival also assesses the, uh, you upload the, uh, blueprint, and then it will assess through artificial intelligence, and it will give you the star, but for this one it is, and it gives you a rating. And that's how we're able to track and monitor how our kids are doing in the writing assessment that takes them online. And this is what we use here, Rival. And the only difference now is we try it at K, uh, third to sixth, uh, eighth grade, we're now going to expand it up to high school. That way, our English and English teachers have access to this program as well. So now it'll be third through twelfth grade. Next is Global, and what this is, is just, uh, uh, contracted services for interpretation for our depth of students in our, in our, it's what I assume, classrooms. And so hard of hearing, deaf, hard of hearing students, so just translation services. And this is a recurring item that we bring forth to every meeting. As a matter of fact, we bring it, we bring it in July, but this year, we're bringing it early to get it done for, we're ready to go for next year. And last but not least is speech specialists and other going. And what this does is it provides our speech, um, speech, um, what is it? I forget it, it's, it's like this. Our speech services and also our school psychologists. So as you know, across the state of Texas, school psychologists are hard to find, hard to staff. And so this is our way to mitigate, if we're short, we can contract the services out because what's, uh, school psychologists do, they make sure that they give the assessment for specialist students. They've got to move their leaders, or they tend to refer, and they have to do the whole screening, and they have to do the reporting, and they have to be present at the arguments. And so right now, I don't know if you know this, but across the state of Texas, LSST is what we call it, psychologists, there's a shortage across the state, and there's a fierce competition to hire those individuals at all districts. So we're not having to look at other ways to make sure that we can stay competitive and also make sure that our kids are serviced in appropriate time. Okay? And those are all online items. Are there any questions? Yes?
Sir, uh, this, ZERN, is this the one that's going to be implemented in K to second grade next year?
No, ma'am, that, the one you referred to that we talked about last week, that we're talking about, Ureca Math.
Ureca Math.
Uh-huh. Ureca Math is a tier-one instruction, that's the, the curriculum that we get. This is more of an adaptive online program.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Basuko, trans.
Oh, yes, and I did forget to bring up, Ms. Martinez, there is a caveat on the speech special.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening, board members, um, team members, and the speakers, yes. Uh, I wanted to add a little bit of information because we are having issues. If you'll recall, two or three months ago, um, we brought, our human resources got a proposal to start hiring educational diagnosticians where we couldn't find LSST. So we, um, not exhausted, but we're looking at a lot of different things. This evening, the proposal for ninety-seven-nine thousand dollars, I, I want to point out that it is for next year. The second thing is that this is one company that we were originally going to recommend. There are three different companies that write similar services that are already part of the region twenty co-op. So we are currently working with our senior department to make sure that we go three deep in the bench like we do for our contact services, PPS, so that when there's a need and we can't hire the staff, because sometimes some of these companies run short as well. So by the time we get to board meeting, more than likely, the recommendation will be that we have these three vendors on the list as opposed to the one. And this company will likely be one of them, but what you will expect to see more than likely is at least three, and we're working those details out in the first senior department, or we're, we're trying to get ahead of, of the game as much as possible next morning while I'm here. The hope would be that we hire staff and these contact services go down. So, Mr. Staele, what's your question? We don't necessarily know if we're going to use this, but we do need to build a bench because we can't hire the individuals that aren't as planned. So are, are there any questions about that? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I, I want to, before we start to give the next presentation, I want to give a lot of, of kudos to the team around, uh, Dr. Silva, Dr. Basuko, Mr. Chavez, uh, Dr. Mackey, and Mr. Malabey. Over the last few months, the quotes that, uh, were presented, so we, we funneled them all a little in that we find opportunities to fund for two years, and so the backup is not matching, but there's a lot of intent behind it. What we're trying to do is leverage, ESSER is going to end in September, we've said that multiple times. So what we're trying to do is leverage the funds, ask permission from TPA, and buy its licenses for two years. What that will look like, and we're going to go into a little bit more detail at the board performance planning meeting, is we're leaving about five hundred thousand dollars from our IMA fund that we normally, so if you're wondering how we can give this in two years, it's, it'll be through IMA, and we've done, Dr. Silva, Dr. Basuko, their team has done a lot of work, uh, to look at future adoption and to know that in two years, we're going to stop the way that we have an IMA to make sure that we can, uh, continue in front of resources for students.
Can we elaborate on the board, what I have mentioned?
Instructional materials along with, thank you, sir. So that's what, how we normally would provide this, is perfectly qualified in the ESSER, and it'll give us two years so that we can go away that money for the next adoption. Okay? So with that said, I'm going to move us on. Um, so this evening, we have, uh, Mr. Williams and myself, I'm going to attempt to fill in for Ms. Ariñové. She is at the office, you're going to see why there's a lot of stuff going on, but tonight, um, Ms. Williams and I are going to handle a few agenda items, so pretty recurring and very familiar at the GAB now. We have rules for some art piece, um, not the donations, investment reports, tax collection reports, and monthly financials, pretty routine things. Um, at the end, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams also wants to talk about a resolution to support military connected students and families, and the human resources reports that you see there are the additional, the, the standard reports that we have every month. So as Mr. Chavez mentioned, um, as we're moving forward in the work, we're still entering everything that we do to look at those priorities that are set forth by the board. Ms. Sardinas and Mr., uh, Abubiz are currently at an SGS leading representative. This SGS work continues, and it has been instrumental, and we talked about the return on investment. That work is something that we continue to, um, work on and expand, basically, and we're going to have a summary of that probably in the next month, and Sardinas will present something, um, based on what they're learning today at the SGS summit. So for business and finance, we're going to request that we extend the proposal for paint services that was issued in 2022, 23. This will be the second extension. We have two, um, services, Tesla and Texpro. Ward, I do want to mention that really this year, uh, PPS has handled everything internally. These two vendors have not been used, but we do, out of a bunch of caution, in case we do have things come up, we do want to contain the RFQ and have them on the bench in case our services are needed. We also have donations, the amount one thousand seven eight four fifty, uh, from Insturayz, then middle school, uh, used the vendor in order to, um, fundraise for their celebration at the end of the year at Endurance. We have the portfolio investment report, interest term shows the, the, the meter investments, we have about a million dollars, but year-to-date earnings from all our friends are leveling out right now at about two point five million dollars. So we are, um, well on target. We did check into, um, diversifying, and we talked some, we have asked about why we're not investing further. Our portfolio that we have currently with meter and what we have with Texpro, we do diversify it, and then do invest in a semi-aggressive model. So our interest type is around between five, five point eight percent. So as you can see, the interest terms have, have done significantly well, uh, going out to the local market would not yield us that much more, it would have our money to be there six months. So, um, currently, we're going to continue with the model that we have, and we'll explore something different as the interest rates change. Uh, what you don't have, or you have not on yet, but you will have by the time the board meeting comes around, our April monthly tax collection report and the monthly financial statement will send those to the board update, but these are the current items. Um, we, we keep it informed, and we'll have these ready probably by this week, next week in the latest, but definitely by the time we, we meet at the board performance summit. And before I move over to Mr. Williams, I want to thank Mr. Williams. He's going to talk to you about a resolution, and I'm going to let him handle that, but you may want to remind Mr. Williams, he's reading a resolution about, um, military. He's been supporting our JR OTC programs at the middle school, he's doing a lot of, um, activities from our OTC when they present colors at our board meetings. I want all this to thank Mr. Williams because he's on me, filled the need, he is more than, than, our former reading is more than equipped to, to be and provide guidance to our students. So I want to thank Mr. Williams for the work he's doing with our students and, and all the, the support he provided.
I appreciate that. I don't want to be somewhere I can't take a compliment. Uh, I would be excited if I didn't learn to never assess anything from a ring.
I have to mess up the notes.
You're just testing, you're in the, now you're testing. Okay, so with that being said, good evening, uh, uh, the school board, my president, Dr. Abnandis, uh, students, staff, and staff members. What I have tonight is a proposal that will come to you at the next board meeting, uh, it's a resolution, uh, requiring our support for military students and their families. So I put up one major interest station, it has, it has five W's, signal the military theme, that's how we communicate, uh, through, through five W's. And so I'll just go through it really quickly, the board, the, uh, the Purple Star Campus Designation was created to recognize, uh, school districts that demonstrate educational and social emotional support for students that transition from duty station to duty station with their families. Uh, a lot of times with that, there's some unique challenges that they, uh, face. So that's the purpose of this, it was created by the legislature about four years ago. So what actually is it? It's a designation on a award that is bestowed upon a school district that needs a certain criteria, or what is that criteria? It's, it's, it's four major pieces, but, but then only pieces, of course, there's some more layers to it. And so that work at district level, I'll be wanting to contact, but it's a campus designation on each campus, each campus has to meet this criteria. And so those four major pieces of criteria are designated in campus-based military day exam. So I'm working with school leadership to identify who that person might be at campuses, uh, creating and maintaining an easy, accessible web page, which all of our campuses now have their own websites, so I've worked with, uh, uh, communication and marketing already to deliver, so, uh, we're ready to go with that information, uh, as soon as we're ready to have permission to move forward, should I say? Uh, we, we have that, that information already, ready to go, we built those web, that webpage that we've run at campuses already. Uh, implement a campus transition program. Again, that'll be something I work closely with school leadership, uh, in conducting that. I already kind of have a skeleton, some ideas, kind of like manual services that they can choose from, so if one of the campuses, they have opportunity to choose what, what's best for them, that. And the last thing, or not the least thing, it's broken down into three, uh, options. And the option that I'm bringing to this whole board, uh, is a resolution showing support for military connected families and, uh, students and families. And so that's an opportunity right there to make sure the board is not just aware of this resolution and this initiative, but also actively participating in it, because all the other two are ways to go around the board and making this happen without the board actually have their hands in, in, in this problem and this condition. And those two are, we could, uh, show that we participated in a month of military child. We did, uh, we, we did that last month, uh, AGR, at Purple Lab, at campus. So we've already checked that box, uh, military family month, which was November, certainly we have to do this on that month, a better than one, a better than day one. Of course, we did stuff, did stuff even in operations, so we checked that box. Uh, partnership with the school labor officer to encourage and provide opportunity for active duty military members. Uh, I, I myself am now a, a proud member of the district better, so we can check that box. So, uh, number, number four, we got, we kind of checked two out of three, we only need one, but I would move forward with this recommendation or this initiative, we got the board's support, so that's why I'm bringing this. Uh, the win, the application window for this, again, may be first of this year, run through June the 7th, we're, we're well poised to make that, uh, to make that deadline. And so notification of whether those campuses, if those campuses get that designation or not, will be August of, of 2024. And so where do we do this? We do this on TPA, uh, at website, we download the application, fill out information, send in our, uh, evidence of these criteria. And then the last thing, why? Because we, again, we want to show our military service members that, uh, chosen to, to, uh, secure our nation's borders, and we support them in their transition, on one place for them, and support the families.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this for our student solely or any student in tax company?
It's open to any school district in this, in this state. Uh, but this resolution that I'm bringing, of course, is for our students here in our district. I can tell you that, I have information over there, that in Region 20, we have about eighteen school districts in Region 20, and only seven, as of today, have that, that connection. Seven school districts have schools that have that connection. Not, and that, and a lot of those districts, I don't want to call any names, but let's just say X Y and Z school district has twenty schools, and that district, they've only learned, uh, qualified or submitted to law. Sir?
Um, according to my verification, is this something that, that you will be implementing for the district, or will you be pointing that, or something, if there's something going on in it? How will we get the regulations if we don't?
Those, those, that criteria that I've listed, if we meet that criteria, show evidence that we meet that criteria for number four, major system criteria, uh, you want to talk about the application process? If we fill out that application, then show that we meet that criteria, it's evaluated at TPA, and at that point, uh, they will let us know in August whether or not we, uh, or award the dest, the designation. Now, there's a point of contact at TPA that I'm in touch with the assault, of course. Prior, we're going to give this application in early, uh, we need to contact that in due to make sure that we have the necessary, then we probably should have a place to know that we at least, at a minimum, uh, submit the right documentation, and then at that point, we're, we're the type we would sit there, agree that that's still an application. And this designation, I thank you for, uh, joining, I'm running out of time, I have a minute to say. Once we get the designation, it's good to you, and have your mind.
Both of you know all the college or district, uh, our ministry, two, and two. Both of you know all the college visits, our ministry, two in school. Eight, eight schools, you know, in Berkeley, you know, we're going to be for me.
Thanks. Thank you, ma'am.
The next three hours of human resources, those will be discussed as necessary in closed session, and the reports will be sent to the board. I want to move forward to twenty-four, twenty-five budget updates. So this, this year, and let's say this, Abuji, it is beyond challenging. Just the customer gave the, bringing the licenses for two years. So we have a lot of moving parts with the adult account moving now. As we move forward, we're still working on the auspices of keeping mental health services. The academy is supporting, using the evidence of that for the last ones, and all the items are coming to the board for approval for next year. We're trying to secure funds and make sure that we have the, the right things in our place to the students. That's not to say that we're not worried about the adults. So here's what's happening right now. We still have staffing committee that's meeting weekly to make sure that we have the right moves, teaching the right places, master scheduling. So there's still a lot of moving parts. By next week, though, I hope that we have a voting of severance. Uh, we're the president, and the revenue, we already said it's expensive, but we're trying to hire now. We need to make sure that all the things that we need for next year are covered, and we need to have funding sources identified. So we're leveraging existing funding sources to include Title I, to include the ESRA funds, which will be compared for two months. We're preparing the tax rate because we need the tax rate, but we haven't gotten the estimated tax holes from Fair County yet. Uh, and we're basically moving over five hundred units of front line. So I mentioned earlier, Miss Abunio and her team are at the office working. Those are some of the dual hurdles, the things that are necessary, systems and process wise to, to make sure that we get, get everything done before coming in with solid recommendations. But we do expect that by next week, we're going to have better numbers and get into a lot of deep thought, how the work performance planning. So that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions? Yes, sir.
Let me ask one, one point to board members. If at all possible, I would ask that you do try to attend the board performance planning meeting. There's a lot of good information that's going to be provided to you with regards to the final budget recommendation. We still have another workshop after that, and we still have another group of performance planning. So provided like what we wanted to be given the information that we have at this time with regards to revenues and everything that we're going to have to use to make the best possible decision, known open on today. Uh, I will remind you that this, next year is going to be a legislative year for the Purple Star session this, uh, this spring. So there's obviously a lot of information that will be coming out next, uh, next spring in the summer. But we don't expect any action to come out of that until a year from now. We are going to make the best decision we can, you know. But again, if you could please make, uh, a point to attend the board performance planning, and you would love, love to, uh, give a lot more information at these meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Ma'am, any more? Any questions with regards to our tax base? Are we abreast as to, you know, businesses moving in? Or are we abreast as to what, um, situation is in the basements with those bigger businesses or, and then, I don't know, foreign days coming up for, coming online with us? So are we going to have, can you imagine?
We will, and that's part of the tax hole. So what we normally, as we start going away, is future taxes. And here's which you can actually tax them. And that might include, especially, um, that might look like we have Section 8. There are special, um, tax breaks that you can do that include property taxes. So all of that is included with the point that we get. So I believe that we're going to have more than like this three percent increase in our property base, but that doesn't always translate into three percent on our taxes. Um, when we talk about the aging population, et cetera, every time someone qualifies for tax exemption, we get those brackets frozen as well. So although we have some new businesses and some startups that happen, part of our tax will also at the top gets frozen for some of the, the homesteads. So we have a lot that happens during the year. So we know we have new businesses, some of it gets frozen at the top because of the, the age of some of the homeowners, some having in the community. But all of those things are just part of the tax report. Yes, sir?
Uh, I know back in, like, last October, we did have the discussion, like, selling those properties that...
Yes.
Do you have an update on that?
We do, actually. I got the, the most recent update this morning to include, uh... I'm going to get the actual report tomorrow. I got an update just today, Mr. Chavez, and I were talking about that. So we have now property evaluations, and now tomorrow we'll have the lease values. And we also have a meeting with the committee that Mr. Chavez announced to get some ideas of what some of those things could look like so we can bring recommendations to the board.
How do you know the companies are...
The lots, the empty lots? Yes, sir. That's going to include that, that information. So we, we have actually the values that are assigned by the party now that we're going to bring to the board as a package to see what we can do or what we won't do. So we do. Yes, sir?
Do you have an approach to me at the time?
The last time was about a year or two years, or maybe, maybe you missed. But there were, um, we were approached about a complex. They were renovating the classes to complete in high school. Um, yes, we are going to community. So we were approached, and we did, and send in a letter for the potential tests. So they were renovating the, the complex, and there were several buildings that felt inactive. But at that point, and we have to be measured to, Mr. Chavez, because they're sitting there and to, to base your tax base, so they're sitting there. So sometimes the abatments are good because you get the students in, and they were, when we looked, they were multi-family units. So the idea is we may have a couple of students out in Boulder, and instead, more of the other students. So we have to weigh that really carefully as well. Yes, sir?
Uh, let us know if my points pick out a way.
Good question. That means that, so if I have a property that's worth $100,000, um, and there's a lot of other things right there. Instead of paying $100,000, I need a tax rate and pay maybe only on $50,000 because I have certain priorities to consider, whether it be, um, Section 8 housing, providing to, to be prepared for. So there's, there's all criteria that city looks at, and they have to let the taxing entities know that we have the opportunity to protest. So when we talk about the abatments, it's, it's a way of defunding taxes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the time is now 5:38. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Deveron, please. Mr. Fardes, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those again, raise your hand and say nay. Please leave this adjourned. Thank you for coming.